The views, information, and opinions expressed during the following program are solely those of the individuals involved and do not necessarily represent the views of Access Communications, its representatives, or its employees.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Waverne City Council, held in council chambers at 6:00 PM Tuesday, October 10th, 2023. First line of business: approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting and strategic planning and priorities meeting, held September 25th, 2023. Do you have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion, your worship.
I'll second that motion, your worship.
Call the question. All in favor? Carrie Denham, say. A wish to additions to the agenda, Mr. Warren?
Yeah, so thanks for worship. I have one change for the agenda tonight. I'd like to have 7D, appointment of the billing official, removed. So what we have to do is actually have to get approval from the province before I can bring it here. So I did talk to the province about that today. So I'd like to have that removed and then brought back to a future meeting.
Okay. Counsel, anything? Seeing none, just wish to, in public hearings and notices...
Your worship, we have to do a motion to delete that item from the agenda.
Okay, pardon me.
I'll give you a motion to adjust the agenda and remove 7D.
I'll second that, your worship. All in favor? Carrie Denham, say. We have a full council here tonight. No public hearings and notices, delegations, and proclamations and petitions. Tonight, we have a proclamation Fire Prevention Week. You would give me a moment? Whereas the city of Waverne is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting our city, and whereas the fire is a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally, homes are locations where people are at greatest risk from fire. And home fires killed more than 2,800 people in North America in 2021, according to the National Fire Protection Association, and fire departments responded to 338,000 home fires. And the 2023 Fire Prevention Week theme, Cooking Safety Starts With You, Pay Attention to Fire Prevention, effectively serves to remind us to stay alert and use caution when cooking to reduce the risk of kitchen fires. And whereas two of every five home fires starts in the kitchen, with 31% of these fires resulting from unattended cooking. And whereas more than half of reported non-fatal home cooking fires' injuries occurred when the victims tried to fight the fire themselves. And whereas children under five face a high risk of non-fire burns associated with cooking than being burned in a cooking fire. And whereas residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire, with working smoke alarms cutting the risk of dying in reported home fires to almost in half. And whereas Waverne's first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention, protection, education, so Waverne residents can take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes. Therefore, I, Marcel Roy, Mayor of the City of Waverne, S.A., do hereby proclaim the week of October 8th to the 14th, 2023, to be Fire Prevention Week in the City of Waverne. And I urge all the people of Waverne to check their kitchens for fire hazards, use safe cooking practices during Fire Prevention Week 2023, and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of the Waverne Fire and Emergency Services. I would like the fire chief to come forward for a picture and will of receiving the proclamation, if you would, please. Moving forward. Consent agenda. Public Works September report, Fire Department September report, and the Water Treatment Plant September report. These are all going, will be found on our Waverne City website. Do you have a motion, please?
Your worship, I'll make the motion that the items on the consent agenda be accepted as presented.
Your worship, I'll second that motion.
Questions? Call the question. All in favor? Carrie Denham, say. Accounts payable under motions. If you would, please.
Your worship, I'll make the motion that the purchases in the amount of $2,819,777.30 from September 1st, 2023 to September 30th, 2023 be passed for payment.
I'll second that, your worship.
Discussion? Call the question. All in favor? Carrie Denham, say. Landfill Gate Attendance Contract Extension. Jen, if you would, please.
Yes, good evening. So the City of Waverne contracts out the gate operation at the landfill. The current contract is held by the commissioners, but is set to expire on December 31st, 2023. They have been operating the gate at the City of Waverne landfill since 2017. The City of Waverne Engineering Department reached out to the commissioners to provide an extension proposal of three years from January 1st, 2024 to December 31st, 2026. The contract terms and hours of operation would remain the same. The proposed yearly cost would be $69,535 for 2024, $71,616 for 2025, and $73,760 in 2026. These costs are very competitive. They still remain below the other proposals that were received in 2020 when we put it out to RFP. And commissioners have met all the requirements of the agreement over the past three years. They've had steady employees who can run our chosen software. We have strong communication and have a great working relationship with the commissioners. It is recommended that the landfill gate contract be extended with the Commissioner's South Saskatchewan from January 1st, 2024 to December 31st, 2026.
Do you have a motion?
Your worship, I'll make a motion that the landfill gate attendant contract for a term of January 1, 2024 to December 31, 2026 be awarded to the commissioners with the terms and conditions as recommended by the Director of Engineering.
I'll second that motion, your worship. Discussion? Mr. Higgs?
So Jen, first off, I'm not a fan of soul, of individual soul sourcing. I don't, I don't like it. But regardless of that, and I appreciate they do a good job, and I know that. I mean, I've been out there lots. That's, that's not the issue. Is there a reason other than you're looking at quotes that were three years old?
So the quotes from three years old, we had three bidders at the time, commissioners being one of them. So when I looked at the, even the 2026 number, that $73,760 is lower than what the other two companies bid in those three years. So they still remain lower six years later than the most competitive, than the, any other person that bid. So we find that based on the fact of inflation, and most of their inflation is due to the minimum wage increasing over the course of the next few years. So that's where their increases are coming from. They still remain below anything that was bid before, and a lot of it is just their consistent services. We would not have to retrain anybody to run the software, which can be somewhat complicated because we do run an accounting software that is based for the landfill. So that would save time and efficiencies on that side of our folks having to retrain them and a setup there. And basically, we did, in our agreement, allow for an extension proposal the last time we RFP'd it and said that was an option. So we did RFP it in 2020 to see what was out there, because that option has always been in our agreement. But in 2020, when we came back, they still got awarded the contract. And so when I went and looked back, and their prices were still lower than what was bid in 2020, we felt comfortable doing the extension.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Richards?
Thanks, your worship. Thanks for that clear answer. I appreciate it. Just, just to, again, I think I know the answer to this, but this is a contractual agreement, not an employment agreement. So the City of Waverne is responsible for no employee benefits. There's no pension. There's no EI, Canada Pension, no WCB premiums on our part. We pay simply the, whatever, starting at $69,535 per year. That's all we're...
Yeah, we basically just pay the commissioners. They are responsible for providing any kind of benefits. These are not employees of the city. We do obviously do training with those employees, because it is our software and it is our landfill. We will provide training to ensure that they're running efficiently, meeting all of our demands. But no, they are not employees of the, the City of Waverne. So if their employees call in sick, it is up to the commissioners to find the replacement employee and such.
And there's no employment-related costs here at all?
No, we just pay the commissioners.
Very good. Thanks, Jen.
Mr. Jankie?
I was gonna ask the same question that Counselor Higgs asked, so I'm gonna modify it slightly here. And you said that in the original contract, there was a, a option for extension in there?
Mm-hmm.
From that, I can infer the answer to my own question. But do we not have a fiduciary responsibility to put something of this size out to tender?
So we can, based on the way the agreement is written, we can offer that extension. And in our procurement policy, we do have the option for soul sourcing if we see it's fit.
Can we do that indefinitely, or is it a report where we would have to tender it again?
I think we always want to keep a responsibility to be looking what's out there. So after this, when we have awarded six years, we might look at a, an RFP next time. That's kind of why we looked at an RFP previously was to see what was out there. But based on the 2020 results, there's not an overly high interest in running a gate at a landfill as well. So I think you always want to keep your options open to do either or.
That's it?
I would just like to add, I think that if it isn't broken, leave alone. I think it's, it's working very well the way it, the way it is right now. So I totally support this decision.
Call the question. All in favor? Carrie Denham, say. Oh, pardon me. Against? Sorry. I missed you, Mr. Jankie. I'm Mr. Higgs. Sorry. Not watching there. I'm so used to it, so not watching. I apologize. Two against, and the five or four. Going forward here, landfill gate, no, sanitary sewer backflow preventer.
Thank you, your worship. So as identified in 2022 as a priority following two large-scale flood events that took place at the Waverne Leisure Center, $35,000 was allocated towards flood mitigation components, and they were approved within the 2023 leisure services budget. So to ensure high-quality results, we contracted HDA Engineering Limited to engage them in some work to conduct an engineering assessment of our current systems on the site. They'll look after our project design, the project tendering, and the contractor management services along with this repair. So following a recommendation on a best route forward from HDA, a call for tender was posted in July of 2023. Our request for tender was posted on SAS Tenders with the closing date of August 15th, and we received one qualifying bid. It was reviewed by HDA with their recommendation of award then being presented to city staff. So the pricing is as follows. We received one bid from Dawn's Plumbing and Heating with their start time being the fall of this year, at a total cost of $72,927. So although we only did receive the one bid, it did fall within the range of expected costs established by HDA following their design process. So unfortunately, they didn't complete all their design work before we submitted our 2023 budget. So there were some unknown factors that kind of came into play, which caused prices to go up. So yeah, so upon the detailed review, and the scope of work was increased to properly address things. Information gathered in that process, as I mentioned, was determined to take the best course of action to mitigate future flooding events. So what was determined is that we are required to install a backflow preventer in basically what I call the front yard of the swimming pool and a manhole. So although the additional scope of the external manhole was assumed to increase the actual expenses higher than originally budgeted, it was determined to be in the best interest of the city to move forward with posting the tender and move ahead with the project to mitigate future events from occurring. Due to the shipping delays and product availability that we're seeing throughout all of our projects, really, it's expected that if awarded immediately, the project would not be complete until the spring of 2024. However, they are able to get, working on some of the site work this fall, potentially, hopefully, allowing installation to take place before the wet season in the spring. So with the project being split over two years, with this, I'm also requesting that the increase in scope be covered via a 2024 pre-budget approval, allowing us to move forward with the project and avoid any budget overages. So essentially, we would cover the first bit of work this year that they can get done, and then we would, we would cover those final expenses in 2024. So it's recommended that Dawn's Plumbing and Heating of Waverne Saskatchewan are awarded the Waverne Leisure Center Sanitary Backflow Preventer Installation Project, with site work commencing in the fall of 2023, and the final work being completed in the early spring of 2024, at an amount of $72,927, including taxes. It's further recommended that the pre-approved 2024 budget allotment of $37,927 be provided towards this project through our 2024 operating budget.
Do you have a motion, please?
Your worship, I would move that the bid of Dawn's Plumbing and Heating for the supply and installation of the Waverne Leisure Center Sanitary Backflow Preventer in the amount of $72,927 be accepted, and further that the budget overage for this project in the amount of $35,927 be allotted to the 2024 Leisure Services Operating Budget.
Your worship, I will second that motion.
Discussion?
I just have one question, Counselor Corgan, or I don't know if you could, you said the budget overage. So is it actually a budget overage, or is it just pre-approved?
So I'm not looking for an over, a budget overage on 2023. What I'm doing, looking to do is basically splitting it into two parts, with part A being approved in 2023 and part B being approved for 2024.
So unless I misunderstood what you said, I thought you said budget overage.
It's not, it's not about, it's about a, it's overage of 2023, or no, it's just an advance.
If I may, I think the question is, are we spending more money in this fiscal year than we budgeted for, or is that cost gonna be coming next year?
No. So I've got confirmation from the, from Dawn's that actually the price tag for 2023 will be right at the $35,000. It's $31,000 and change with taxes for 2023. Due to shipping time, all that stuff, we won't accumulate any of those extra expenses until end of 2024. So really, I'm, I'm requesting a preapproval of $37,000 for 2024.
Right, so neither accrual for this year or a, sorry, Mel. Neither an accrual for this year or a overage for, sorry, neither an accrual for next year or an overage for this year.
Correct. Yeah, I think I understand that. I just think it's written incorrectly on the, on the motion.
Do you want to change the motion? How would you change it?
That it's a preapproved $37,000 rather than a, an overage.
Do you wish to change it? Would you like to change it, Mr. Corgan? So it's ready and properly?
As opposed to reading the, and further that the budget overage, that it would read, further that the, the preapproved budget for this project?
Yeah, some, yeah, preapproved, further to, to the...
Further 2024, yeah.
You would go with that motion?
Yes, your worship.
Do you have to have a, a, no?
No, Counselor, if Counselor Jankie agrees to that change, the mover and the second agree to that change, that'll be good.
No, your worship, I'll second it that way.
Okay. Any further, Mr. Higgs?
First of all, I'm thrilled. I think this is fantastic. So has this put a stop to the flooding into the basement and the pumps and all that others?
That is the goal of this, yeah.
Good work.
We don't want to experience another shutdown like we had in 2022, that's for sure.
Great work.
No further discussion? All in favor? Carrie Denham, say. Moving forward, introduction bylaws, building bylaw, 2023-3462.
Yep.
Mr. Warren?
Thanks, your worship. City of Waverne currently has a billing bylaw adopted under the Uniform Building and Accessibilitys Act. So in 2021, UBEES Act was replaced with the Construction's Code Act, and therefore, the billing bylaw and references therein need to be updated. So we actually had this previously approved at our February 13th meeting, that we had, we had the province come back to us and say, you have to have changes. So at our meeting in September, I brought this back for first reading to council. So the biggest thing we want to do is move forward the second and third readings tonight. So a little background is that we did have a meeting with Ministry of Government Relations to review the bylaw in place of you guys tonight. They provided observations and recommendations back to administration, and through our work with the Technical Standards Branch, they felt like it was good to be provided to council. So as previously stated, the first reading of this bylaw was on September 11th of 2023. So I am recommending that City Council give a second and third reading of bylaw 2023-3462, and direct administration to submit the bylaw to Ministry of Government Relations for approval.
Do you have a motion, please?
Building bylaw for the City of Waverne be read a second time.
I'll second that, your worship. Discussion? Call the question. All in favor? Carrie Denham, say.
Your worship, I'd like to make a motion that bylaw 2023-3462, the building bylaw for the City of Waverne be read a third time and passed.
I will second that also, your worship. Call the question. All in favor? Carrie Denham, say. Moving forward, bylaw 2023-3463, OCP amendment. Mr. Warren?
Yeah, thanks, your worship. My report. So zoning bylaw amendment application and corresponding official community plan amendment application has been submitted by Brad Anderson. The amendment is to allow for a subdivision and development of a commercial shop, which is consistent with zoning at the property of 1451 First Avenue Northwest, which is highway commercial area. The property is currently under a subdivision application. It will create the parcel and commercial shop. The proposed parcel is parcel A, Plan 01, or 0101435688. The property was previously city-owned. So we, after our September 11th council meeting, we sent everything out for a public notice. So in accordance with our public notice policy, notices were advertised in the September 13th and 20th additions of the Waverne Review posted here at City Hall and our city website. And additionally, we had neighborhood notices sent out to properties within 75-meter radius of the property. The notice was also provided to the Waverne District Plan Commission to give them an opportunity to comment on the application, and there was no objections from them, and no responses received from anyone else that we provided this notice out to. So the proposal is for Brad Anderson to build a commercial shop on parcel A. The applicant is proposing to subdivide the existing commercial shop on the west side of 1451 First Avenue from a caretaker's unit on the east side, and the additional land they purchased from the city would become part of the caretaker's unit property to allow for a new commercial shop to be built behind the house. So the OCP and zoning amendments are required to facilitate development of a, of a development for the property subject to the current parks, open space, and recreation zones, which does not allow for a commercial shop on that area. So I do have an area of the subject property, an aerial view of where it'd be located, and the location within Plan A, which would look like for the property. So the property currently has a parks and open space land designation. The applicant is requesting that the lands be designated highway commercial on the land use designation map of the OCP. The purpose of designation is to provide highway commercial lands to businesses that require highway access. So again, the property is currently zoned as a parks, open space, spaces, and recreation. The applicant has requested the land be rezoned to highway commercial zone, which would allow for custom workshop as a permanent use. So I do have a list of what's a permanent discretionary use in the area. So for this, official community plan amendments must be approved by the Ministry of Government Relations. So after finally reading of bylaw 2023-3463, this will be submitted to the province for ministerial approval, and then both bylaws will take effect upon approval from the ministry. So I got a couple of options for my council tonight. Option one is for council hold a public hearing regarding bylaws 2023-3463 and 2023-3464, and to hear any concerns or comments from interested parties. For council, give second and third reading of bylaw 2023-3463, being a bylaw to amend the official community plan to designate the above-mentioned lands as highway commercial on the future lands use and lands use designation map. For council, give second, second, third reading of bylaw 2023-3464, being a bylaw to amend the zoning bylaw to rezone the aforementioned land from parks and open spaces and recreation zone to highway commercial zone. And then for council, direct administration to submit the bylaws to the Ministry of Government Relations for approval. And then option two is council refuse both bylaws in front of you tonight, and then direct council to provide a refusal back to that applicant. So our recommendation from staff tonight is that council give second, third reading of both bylaw 2023-3463 and 2023-364, to amend the official, official community plan and zoning bylaw as mentioned above.
Your worship, I move the bylaw 2023-3463, a bylaw to amend bylaw 2020-3411, the official community plan, for the purpose of amending the land use designation for property 1451 First Avenue Northwest from parks and open spaces to highway commercial be read a second time.
Your worship, we actually can't do a reading until we have a public hearing. So you'll have to...
Because I was gonna say, if you want, before we do a...
So hold that thought, Counselor Jankie.
Apologies, your worship. I dropped the gun.
Okay. I thought you were gonna do a second reading then. But prior to the second reading, if we are going to go forward with the second reading, I will call the, the public hearing now for bylaw 2023-3463 to be declared open, and invite any parties wishing to speak regarding this bylaw may come forward and speak to it. Calling once, calling twice, calling three times. No one is coming forward. At this point, I will close this call for submissions, and council now can proceed with the second and third reading.
Apologies for that. I was hoping someone was gonna say something after all that, but... Your worship, I move the bylaw 2023-3463, a bylaw to amend bylaw 2020-3411, the official community plan, for the purpose of amending the land use designation of the property of 1451 First Avenue Northwest from parks and open spaces to highway commercial be read a second time.
I'll second that, your worship.
Discussion? Call the question. All in favor? Carrie Denham, say. Mr. Jankie?
Your worship, I move the bylaw 2023-3463, a bylaw to amend bylaw 2020-3411, the official community plan, for the purpose of amending land use designation for the property at 1451 First Avenue Northwest from parks and open spaces to highway commercial be read a third time and passed.
I'll second that, your worship.
Discussion? Seeing none, call the question. All in favor? Carrie Denham, say. That's Carrie. Bylaw 2023-3464, Mr. Warren?
I see the presentation on that, your worship. Just looking for some motions from the council.
Okay, before that, it's there. The fire, you didn't want to reread this again? No, no, I said reread the whole report again here, just to be in... No, no, I said reread the whole report again here, just to be in part of it, okay. All right, we'll skip that, and then prior to second reading, we must have a public hearing. So, the public hearing for bylaw twenty, twenty-three, thirty-four, sixty-four is declared open, and I invite any parties wishing to speak regarding this by, by law, may come forward at this point in time. Call, first call. Second call to come forward. Third call to come forward. Seeing no one coming forward, I close this public hearing now. Council can proceed with your second reading.
Thanks, your worship. Now, are you sure you don't want me to get city manager to go through that?
I would like to.
We could ask him to go through that presentation one more time.
For clarification.
No, we won't. Your worship, I'd make a motion that bylaw two thousand twenty-three, thirty-four, sixty-four, a bylaw to amend zoning bylaw two thousand twenty, thirty-four, twelve, for the purpose of rezoning the property described as parcel A, plan one oh one, four, three, five, six, eighty-eight, from parks and open spaces to highway commercial be read a second time.
I'll second that, your worship.
Call a question, all in favor, oh, call a question, oh, do you have a question? Okay, oh, all in favor? Kerry unanimously.
Your worship, I'd make a motion that bylaw two thousand twenty-three, thirty-four, sixty-four, a bylaw to amend zoning bylaw two thousand twenty, thirty-four, twelve, for the purpose of rezoning the property described as parcel A, plan one oh one, four, three, five, six, eighty-eight, from parks and open spaces to highway commercial be read a third time and passed.
Discussion.
I'll, I'll second that, your worship.
Discussion. Seeing none, call a question, all in favor? Kerry unanimously. Yeah, we could. And Mr. Jenkey's still on the, raising the hands, thought he was gonna, fire a bylaw, if you would, please.
Yeah, thanks, your worship. So tonight we have Fire Chief Trent Lee here to go through the fire bylaw with council.
Good evening. The City of Waverham Fire Service bylaws intended to protect the residents of and visitors to our community from the effects of fire. Uh, May tenth, twenty twenty-three, Waverham City Council passed the Fire Protective Services bylaw, twenty twenty-one, thirty-two, twenty-four. In twenty twenty-three, City Council identified the review of the Fire Service bylaw as a strategic priority. The Fire Department conducted a thorough review of the current Fire Protective Services bylaw. Uh, we referenced other cities' bylaws comparative to our size, and everything was compared thoroughly. Um, and it is recommended replacing the current bylaw with the attached version. There are several changes in this bylaw, including, uh, definitions and abbreviations. Uh, the authority of fire chief, fees for service, fire protection systems, we updated the requirements, fees for responding to false alarms, inspections of premises, order to remedy contraventions, appeals of orders, immediate hazards, fire hydrants, smoke alarms, carbon monoxide alarms, fire pits, chimenea and open air fires. Um, sorry, I just lost my page. My phone shut off on me. I actually have it all in front of me, I just pushed the wrong part. Fire pits. Barbecue and propane heaters, patio heaters, fire bands, property identification, vacant buildings, securing of premises, accommodating of equipment, hazardous substances and offense and penalties. The reasons are, we need to better clarify the bylaw for the city's residents and their safety, reducing the amount of time spent on scene by fire crews of multi, responding to multifamily dwellings and commercial properties, reduce, repeat fire inspections for those properties and property owners who refuse to comply with the National Fire Code of Canada, and the ability to recover, cost recovery expenses occur within the city limits. It is, uh, recommended that, uh, Waverham City Council first give the first reading of the bylaw two thousand twenty-three, thirty-four, sixty-six at this meeting, and direct administration to bring this bylaw back for a second and third reading.
Do you have a motion, please?
Your worship, I'll make the motion that bylaw two thousand twenty-three dash thirty-four, sixty-six, the fire bylaw for the City of Waverham be read a first time.
I'll second that, your worship.
Discussion. Mr. Jenkey?
Uh, no comments, just, uh, well done, uh, on this, Trent, I know you put a lot of work into this and it's not an easy process, so, thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a comment here first, that it is well done, but I don't agree with the fines and fees on there. I know that you have structured it and said it's a first offenses, written warning and discussion. We also, you, we talk about the fees within here. It, uh, to me, I think the fees are still, you can say they're comparative to other cities and such, but, uh, Mr. Van Betchu always refers back to a made in Waverham sort of, uh, attitude. I think these are, I don't care what the other cities are, we're Waverham here, these are quite strong fees especially. I think that all the fees could be cut in half, even, you know, from three hundred to hundred fifty, first offense, uh, two fifty, second offense, three fifty, you know, uh, five hundred and thirty defense. There are some of these fees that are, and I know that the reasoning is that if people don't comply, they've saved money, but that's not how we're, fees are, fines are to get compliance, and I, I think that compliance is not by stick, it's by education, that's what a fire bylaw. You guys do a wonderful job in education, that's what you guys do, educate and try to get people moving forward towards it. And, uh, these fines are, are kind of the last resort. We, we see in our criminal courts, they're not even sending people to jail for theft and destroying property and everything, it's, and they're incarcerating within the community, they're not doing hardly anything as opposed to, these are, you're dealing with working people who are working and having businesses, and you're, they're, these are going to fines. So I would, uh, would, I won't agree with the first reading on this one. I would say that I would like to see all fines cut in half on this one before I, before I vote in favor of this one.
Actually, if we compare the current bylaw to this bylaw, in the current bylaw, the first offense is a hundred and fifty, the second offense is three hundred. In the proposed bylaw amendment, the first offense is a written warning, and the second offense is three hundred, so it would be exact same dollar value as the current bylaw.
And they're, they're still too high, they're still, they're still too much on it, and it's just the way it is that it's still too much. It should be education, as opposed to fires about education. We've moved, uh, what the fire, I've seen it in the past, is our, our fire structure by doing better building codes, by doing double walls and, and by, it's a kind of a joint effort between the building department, you're working with the building department to get double insulation, to get better fire materials, so we're not, things that are not close together, built close together, so that you can't have passage of fire. Uh, you've, you've done huge, huge months, and leaped forward that we've cut all of our stuff, and that is true. I would like to say, education and better, uh, requirements other than simply by fines. I think, I think the fines are levied, are, are stick incentive, and this is, this is kind of like the old Brit thing of hanging kids twelve years old for bread. You're like, we're not gonna, stealing a loaf of bread, we are not getting into that thing of, of being heavy-handed on all this stuff. And I think that this is still very heavy-handed, and I want to agree with the fines onto this stuff.
I understand and respect your opinion. The, the major problem we're dealing with is the second, third offenses. The only reason people would get them is their negligence and their responsibility of following the National Fire Code of Canada.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Thanks, your worship. Uh, chiefly, I, I would, uh, echo what's been, I think you've done a great job here. Uh, you and I were back and forth over the summer a few times on some clarification on some points, and I think you have addressed those where there was some differentiators between, you know, uh, an owner-occupied dwelling and a rental dwelling, things like that. So I appreciate the work you did in sort of delineating that stuff for us, I think that's very good. I'm very happy with what I see in front of me, and I will a hundred percent support this bylaw, but thank you for your hard work over the summer, that's a lot of work to do, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Not to sound like a broken record, but thank you again very much, thank you for all the back and forth, because I know you answered my questions quite quickly. And, um, I understand, your time is very valuable, so I know that that first defense with the warning comes with education, so that if you do have to go back and talk to people with that second defense, yeah, you guys have to go out and to spend your time making sure that everything's being complied with, so I agree with all of the fines, and thank you again for all that you and the fire brigade does.
Thank you.
Mr. Warren?
Thank you, your worship, and, yeah, excellent work, uh, chief, in going into this document. Just to touch on that fine, if, the fines, if you look under thirty, section thirty-seven D, um, if the fines are paid within fourteen days, you get a hundred dollar deduction, uh, on the amount, and if it's on the, uh, the second one, it's a fifty dollar deduction. So, I, I think that comes more within, in the realm of, of fair, um, if the individual does pay the, the, the fine on time. And I, I do agree that it needs to be an educational aspect to the whole process, and, and that first warning, uh, does give that opportunity. So, thanks again for all your work on this.
Thank you.
Others? With that being said, call a question, all in favor? Opposed, one against. Okay? We'll go forward, and then they'll come back for a second and third reading.
Correct, your worship.
Thank you, Chief Lee, appreciate it. No unfinished business, new business, home-based business, personal service business, uh, number one, two, twenty-one, Fifth Street. Mr. Warren?
Yeah, thanks, your worship, just trying to pull up your report here. Uh, so the City of Waverham has received an application, um, from, uh, Shyla Bro, to operate a personal care service and massage therapy of, um, their residents at number one, uh, two twenty-one, Fifth Street, located in the R three zone. Uh, the landlord of the premise has provided a written permission, uh, for the applicants to operate the business at the said present premise. Uh, this would be considered controversial use, as a business involves clients being directed to the home throughout the day. Uh, the business will operate from Monday to Sunday, from six thirty AM to eight PM. Uh, the applicant anticipates a traffic increase of one to seven clients a day, uh, by appointment only, um, and driveway parking is available. Uh, so, uh, neighborhood notice, um, was sent out, as this is a controversial request, home-based business, uh, which involves clients attending the home. And so what happened is, is that we mailed this out on September the eighth, uh, to all neighbors within fifty meters of the applicant's home. Uh, residents received a notice, were given the opportunity to comment on the application by noon on Monday, October third. Uh, there were no concerns or objections, um, to the, uh, neighborhood notice. Uh, so we have here a map of where it's located. Uh, so the review through the planning department, home-based businesses are permitted use, meaning that landlords have the right to undertake the use in accordance with bylaw, unless provisions of the bylaw are specified, um, concurvened. Home-based businesses generally, um, must meet the following provisions. Be incidental to the use of the premise, uh, as a residence, uh, be compatible with residential uses, be limited in extent in terms of volume of material sold and number of clients, uh, not, uh, substantially increase the volume of traffic, and not, uh, detract from the resi, as residential character of the zone. Uh, the use identified would be considered controversial, uh, through the application under section five point one, point nineteen of the zoning bylaw, as clients will be directed to the home. Uh, staff has reviewed the application and are of the opinion that the home-based business application meets requirements within the zoning bylaw. Therefore, uh, recommending option one to council to move forward, so we have two options in front of council. Uh, so, option one, a council approves a home-based, uh, business application two thousand twenty-three, um, dot seventeen at, um, two twenty, uh, or number one, uh, two twenty-one, Fifth Street, northeast, subject to the following conditions. Uh, no person other than the resident of the dwelling unit shall be engaged in the home-based business, um, as an employee or a volunteer. Uh, no advertisement carrying the address of the dwelling in which the home-based business occurs may be placed in any media. The home-based business shall not occupy more than twenty-five percent of the gross floor area of the dwelling unit. The face of a home-based business assigned onsite must not exceed, um, point zero nine two, uh, square meters, and must be a place within the inside half of the front yard setback. Uh, this permit is only valid for the above address and is not transferable to another address. Uh, reapplication will be required, uh, if the business moves to another location. Home-based businesses are subject to periodic review, uh, to ensuring compliance. Uh, owner's driveway, um, driveway, uh, shall be, uh, used, um, for off-street parking of the clients, and a state business license, um, shall be obtained prior to operation of the home-based business. Uh, so option two is a refusal, and then council has to provide a reason for that.
Do you have a motion, please?
Your worship, I'll make the motion that home-based business permit two thousand twenty-three, zero seventeen, to allow for a home-based business at number one, two, two, one, Fifth Street, lot fifteen, block twenty-three, plan nine nine, S E three six, three, five, four, be approved, subject to the recommendations, recommended conditions. Your worship, I will second that, oh, sorry, Laura, go ahead.
Sorry, Council Jenkey, I'll second that, your worship.
Questions?
Discussion?
Thanks, your worship. Uh, city manager, thank you, put your other hat on now, is, uh, in that role for a bit. I like to drill down on these once in a while, just to make sure that, that everything makes good sense. This one's a little bit different, because it's in a multifamily dwelling. So some of the conditions, such as, um, uh, the business shall not occupy more than twenty-five percent of the gross floor area of the dwelling unit. Now, that is that particular rental unit within the greater dwelling.
That's correct.
Yes. Secondly, it says, um, the permit is only valid for the above address and is non-transferable to another address. Reapplication will be required if the business location moves, removes location. So what if, um, um, if the individual applying moves out? Could someone else move in and continue operating that?
No, they cannot.
They couldn't, so it doesn't transfer, and it, sorry, it doesn't remain after somebody has moved out as a renter.
The application is only for the applicant themselves, so if they choose to go to a different location, they have to come back for approval. If someone else moves into the unit, they do not.
They do not have that approval.
They would have to come back through the same process as this applicant went through tonight.
Excellent, thank you for that clarification.
Discussion, further? Call a question, all in favor? Kerry unanimously. Law consolidation request, CFO Rentals, Mr. Warren?
I'll second your worship. Just had to find the report.
I was gonna say, you, you should have the building inspector appointed already.
He's looking up that zoning amendment when he wants to read it one more time before he goes.
I'll go through electronic.
Page electronics is breaking down here.
Electronics doesn't always work.
We have to have that Jeopardy music play, as we're working here.
I apologize for the delay, council.
No, that's okay. We're just giving you a hard time.
Yeah, this is what happens when you ask me to do more than one report at a council meeting.
Thank you. Uh, so the City of Waverham has received an application from NSWB Law Firm on behalf of CFO Rentals, Inc., consolidate lots five and six on Block E, uh, plan one, zero, two, zero, seven, nine, nine, eight, six, extension zero, um, which is at twelve fifty and thirteen fifty Cotto Avenue West into one lot. Uh, the reason for the application is to facilitate, in addition to their building, which would be located on both lots five and six. Uh, so pursuant to, to the requirement of the Planning Development Act of two thousand and seven, the city must provide comments to the applicant, uh, to be forwarded to the Ministry of Government Relations within the community planning branch. Uh, so administration has reviewed, and we have no objections to the line, or to the title of consolidation. Uh, so recommendation from, uh, administration is that pursuant to sections, uh, one twenty-two, um, section one, A, um, subsection two, uh, of the Planning Development Act, the city advised NSWB Law Firm that they have no objections to consolidation of the land.
Mr. Higgs? Oh, go ahead, Todd.
I'd move that pursuant to section one twenty two, one eighty two of the Planning and Development Act, the city advised NSWB law firm that it is no objection to the consolidation of lots five and six, block E, plan one oh two oh seven nine nine eight six, extension zero into one parcel.
Second?
I'll second that, your worship.
Discussion? Now, once we pass this, then does it go to the ministry for final approval?
That's correct, your worship.
Call the question. All in favor? Carry and announce. Infrared asphalt reclamer. That would be you, Jen?
Yep. Thank you. The transportation department requires an infrared infrared asphalt reclamer for the purposes of repairing larger sections of asphalt throughout the city. This will replace the pothole patch truck that was recently sold. The funds from this sale will cover the costs of an asphalt reclamer with the remaining funds being placed in the fleet fund reserve. An asphalt reclamer heats the existing asphalt area that needs repair and makes the asphalt pliable. Once that area has been heated to the correct temperature, a liquid rejuvenator and new asphalt are added to the existing area to complete the repair. The transportation department completed an onsite demonstration of an asphalt reclamer earlier in the year. On August twenty ninth, the tender was posted on the city's new bidding portals, bids and tenders, SaaS tenders, and the city of Weyburn website for one infrared asphalt recycler reclamer, sorry, including trailer. At that time, the local vendors were directly contacted and notified them that the tender had been posted. On the closing date of September twenty first, a total of three tenders were received and the results of the proposals was follows. So Industrial Machine, they gave one option and Cubix Limited gave two different options. So it is recommended, based on a full bid assessment, that Industrial Machine, Inc. meets the tender and operational requirements as outlined by the city. As such, the following is recommended that one infrared asphalt reclamer, including trailer, be awarded to Industrial Machine, Inc. at a bid price of seventy three thousand, two hundred and forty eight dollars and ninety cents, net cost delivered without trade.
Your worship, I'd like to make a motion that the bid of Industrial Machine, Inc. to supply one infrared asphalt reclamer, including trailer, at a price of seventy three thousand, two hundred and forty eight dollars and ninety cent, net cost delivered without trade be accepted as recommended.
Your worship, I'll second that motion.
Discussion?
Mr. Higgs? Jen, does that will that extend our window of how long we can go into the fall with patching?
This machine not as much because we are heating the road. So you got to think as the road temperature drops, it takes longer to heat it and get it back pliable. This machine will primarily be used in our construction season. We won't see it used throughout the winter a lot.
Okay, so it you're heating the actual pavement on the road, which it says in the paperwork. But any of the stuff that I looked online, it looks like the it's hot coming out of it.
Yeah, I mean, it it you're heating the road as well as anything you're putting into it is hot. The thing is, as you get longer in the construction season, it'll take longer to do the repairs and we're just not sure how they'll last. So I don't want to say that we're going to extend into the winter season.
No, no, no. Nope. Perfect. Thank you.
Mr. Van Betje?
Thank you. Yeah, Jen, so new pavement asphalt that's going in, is it a cold mix or is it a hot mix?
It is a hot mix that is in blocks that you heat into the system. So you warm it up again. Yeah.
So we don't have to wait. We don't have to get hot mix from Regina or wherever to.
No, and that is the big reason why this will be more effective for us than the pothole patch machine. Unfortunately, with us not having an asphalt plant in Weyburn, we were unable to use the pothole patch machine to full capacity. We need an asphalt plant within the city limits so we could be continually filling it. This does not require that and that is why it does have that's why you have a rejuvenator with it. And that's why this machine would work a lot more for our city just because we don't have the asphalt plant in close proximity.
Thank you.
Just want to thank you. I was in favor of the asphalt pothole one and seeing the shortcomings of it. I am glad that you saw the new updated technology that you're saying that we can still have what we're doing, what we want to accomplish, but in better technology, which I always promote better newer technology, latest, greatest engineering.
And our crews did get to test drive one of these machines. So they have actually used our crews as well as our superintendent had done a demonstration last year on this same type of machine. And that's why he set up an onsite demonstration here. And we've been working with other municipalities that do have this. And so this is just, yeah, it it's a better fit for not for Weyburn because we don't have the asphalt plant here.
And we're not shortcoming by going twenty thousand dollars cheaper, are we?
No, no, these are these are all comparable machines. So no, we're quite comfortable with what Industrial Machine has offered. We have equipment from them before. So we are satisfied with their customer service and we're satisfied with this machine as well as this is a less expensive machine than the pothole patch.
Mr. Higgs?
Just curious, any idea on delivery? Will it be here for spring?
It'll it's they say seventy five days.
Oh, perfect.
We we would like it here by year end. Yes.
Call the question. All in favor? Carry and announce. Very good. Thank you. Last one, city Regina letter of support request. Mr. Warren?
Yeah, thanks, your worship. So in two thousand twenty three, the Royal Canadian Mounted Police celebrated their one hundred and fiftieth anniversary. So located in Regina is the RCMP Heritage Center, which was established in two thousand and seven. The Heritage Center in two thousand and twenty two completed consultations and engagement regarding making the RCMP Heritage Center a national museum. So the city mayors have received a request from Saskatchewan Urban Municipalities Association seeking letters of support to assist the RCMP Heritage Center in becoming a national museum. So this little higher level background as provided by the city of Regina, the RCMP Heritage Center was established in two thousand and seven and is a primary tourist destination with more than thirty five thousand visitors a year visiting that center year round from all over the world. So designation as a national museum elevates the culture and collective history of the RCMP and contributes to the ongoing journey towards reconciliation. So as I mentioned before, national survey was done in two thousand and twenty two, and these are highway lights that were received from that report. An average of ninety percent of response were in favor of a national RCMP museum. Eighty nine percent of response say it is important for Canadians to have access to a national museum that honors the courageous contributions of the RCMP while telling even the most difficult stories of dignity and compassion. So I'm recommending to the council that Weyburn City Council provide the RCMP Heritage Center with the layers supporting their request to be recognized as a federal museum by the federal government.
Motion?
Your worship, I move the city council provide a letter of support for the request of the RCMP Heritage Center in the city of Regina to be recognized as a federal museum by the federal government as requested by SUMA.
I'll second that.
Discussion? Go ahead.
Your worship, since this came out of the mayor's meeting, do you suppose that this was there a feeling in the room that this might help to improve the relationship between the RCMP and the province of Saskatchewan?
Actually, this didn't come out of the mayor's meeting.
Apologies.
Pardon me, this came. I didn't see it in the mayor's meeting.
So this was, Councilor Jenke, this is an email that came from the SUMA directly to the city mayor. So it was never discussed at one of their regular meetings. It was more of a request that came from SUMA directly to the mayors asking for support. And SUMA has also provided us support layer for this as well.
And I know and I know that our fellow mayor, Mr. Ludwig, down the road, through his support, he thought he was very much in favor. So there's there's support amongst the mayors for this.
Now, your worship, apologies for the confusion, but the question still stands. Is the feeling in the room that this would help patch that relationship?
I don't know if it would or not. There's there's still a lot of issues going on with policing throughout the whole thing. And there's a rumor now that I'd heard that whether it's unsanctioned, I shouldn't say it, but I don't know if Mr. Wilson would know about it. Rumor that the province is looking at not even going forward with the marshal service. So there's there's just a lot of issues within law enforcement throughout the whole province of a lot of things. So I'm not sure where anything is. But this, I think it's just the idea that we have Regina has a national museum and there's the RCMP have contributed so much through our heritage throughout the whole of Canada, let alone Saskatchewan alone, but throughout the whole of Canada for the support of a federal museum. Call the question. All in favor? Carry and announce. Inquiries and announcements? Laura?
Thank you, worship. I just wanted to let the public know that next week is Saskatchewan Libraries Week and the library is kicking it off with the performance by a local artist. I'm not going to say who. You guys can check it out at the library on Monday night. And then after that, the book sale is October the nineteenth to the twenty first. Donations are currently welcome and we're hoping that the deadline will be October the seventeenth just because volunteers have to sort through all of those books and get them ready for sale. And if you have a few minutes to volunteer between the nineteenth and the twenty first, you can talk to Joanne Smith or Krista Clemmer at the library, or you can contact me. We're all spearheading getting those volunteers set up. And speaking of that October seventeenth deadline, you can hit the Fowl Supper at the comp before bringing your donations to the library.
The city of Weyburn will be supporting Disability Employment Awareness Month, or NIM, this October. On October nineteenth, City Hall will shine bright with purple lights, the gestures away for us to demonstrate our support for individuals who face disabilities. Want to celebrate the contributions to our thriving business community and our community as a whole. Weyburn can join the National Light It Up NIM event by wearing purple and blue on October nineteenth or lighting up the business in the signature purple and blue colors also. I also want to make note as I've been involved in minor football throughout the years at different capacities, I want to, I think is a very good moment for Weyburn considering for the size of school that we have, we are ranked at number three in Canada. We were ranked at number eight last year. Was that correct, Stephen? And we are through our stats, we are number three in Canada, our comp Eagles. Well done. I heard that they believe the the Eagles quarterback is in the top one hundred high school quarterbacks throughout there, the Canada too, this is throughout Canada. So minor football is alive and well. It is it just shows the whole minor football building blocks towards all this stuff, you know, from the little guys all the way up through. It shows the significance and the thing. And if you've been out to our the minor football field with the lights and that the city helped build and give them a lot of stuff in sewage and getting things fixed up out there, it's a wonderful thing to see them play under lights at nighttime. It's very exciting. And this, the things fourteen hundred that Lexington's in, they're going to be playing Estevan this Friday down on Estevan under their lights. And hopefully they'll go down there and watch them give Estevan a thrashing on that. We would say hope that that warmed my heart. Anything else? And as Laura said, seventeenth of October is the Fowl Supper at the comp school. That is one always one to look forward to. We have so many of the other things. I believe with that being said, if there's nothing more, there's no notices of motion. And with that, we will call the meeting adjourned.